Good evening. It is 5:30 on Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. At this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Slate Camp, Forrest Chuck, Amelia Boyd, Ben McGrand, and Commissioners Luke Ahmet and Mo Stunkel are absent at this time. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone would please stand. Are there any announcements at this time from any Commissioners? Any from city staff?
Chairman Hastings, just to let the Commission know, there is a workshop tomorrow on the Sand Creek zoning ordinance amendments. And that is at Farman's Landing at the stairs to the kayak launch at 4:30.
And that's an informational meeting only. Sort of think correctly. Any others? Any other announcements from staff? Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the January 18th, 2022 meeting. Thank you. Seconds?
Second.
Excellent. Who went first? I don't care. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is a presentation and training on planned unit developments, followed by a discussion on possible future zoning code amendments. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
From Michigan. From Michigan.
Thank you. As it's been a while since the planned unit development came to the Commission, some of you may have been on the Commission at the time the last one came through, but since it's been a while, we thought, let's do a refresher on just what they are and how they're slightly different than other approval processes. So what, what's a planned unit development and kind of the textbook definition is attractive land developed as a unit under single ownership or unified control, including one or more principal buildings or uses where the land is planned as a single unit rather than as an aggregate of individual lots. Design flexibility from traditional siting regulations such as side yard setbacks, paint limitations, or land use restrictions such as prohibitions against mixing land uses within a development allow greater flexibility in return for public benefit or amenities. A PUD is intended to provide a win-win, but PUD should not be used simply as a workaround to the zoning ordinance. The legal basis that allows the Commission to consider planned unit developments, the city is enabled by the Idaho Code, Section 676515. And then in the city code, they've been allowed since 2006. And that is in, actually in Title 10 of subdivision of land, Chapter 3. Even though it's kind of a zoning tool, it is, it's in the subdivision title of the ordinance. In the standpoint code of planning development, is that a zoning district per se? It's more of a process to permit flexibility from the underlying zoning district standards. And in the ordinance, it provides a purpose statement that a PUD is development of land in which the standard land use regulations may be modified or waived in order to promote beneficial development of an entire tract of land in conformance with an approved planned unit development permit, which accentuates usable open space, recreational uses, public amenities, community housing, and harmonious development surrounding properties in the city at large. And I bolded that second or the last half. The purpose is to guide major developments and construction by encouraging a planning to development to achieve numerous outcomes. One is a maximum choice of living environments by allowing a variety of housing and building types, permitting an increased density per acre and a reduction in lot dimensions, yards, building setbacks, area requirements. It could be created for a more useful pattern of open space and recreational areas. And if permitted, more convenience in the location of neighborhood commercial uses, recreational uses and services. It would allow a development pattern that preserves and utilizes natural topography and geologic features, scenic vistas, trees and other vegetation, and prevents the disruption of natural drainage patterns. Promotes a more efficient use of land than generally achieved through conventional development or zoning, thus resulting in substantial savings through shorter utilities on streets while encouraging connectivity and a development pattern in harmony with land use density, multimodal transportation facilities and community facilities. It should say objectives, but says objects of the comprehensive plan. So again, those are the purposes and why and when a PUD may be preferred to just standard zoning, which tends to be pretty rigid. Like it's a little slow. Okay. The PUD process. And in the ordinance, it calls for the PUD and planning process to go concurrently. So the process is initially, there's a preliminary development plan. And what that includes is detailed in the ordinance. So that along with a preliminary plan is submitted. That goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and review. And really that preliminary development plan, you're looking at it for approval in principle. You're giving a nod without committing to anything essentially. Then the next step is the middle of the final development plan consistent with whatever input or conditions or changes the Commission provided for should be included in that final development plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviews that and then makes a final recommendation to City Council, who is the final approving body for planned unit development. In reviewing a preliminary development plan, the Commission in as in other actions, you have to make findings, you have to make determinations. For the preliminary development plan, the Commission must determine that the plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the PUD chapter. The proposed development advances the general welfare of the community and neighborhood and whether benefits combinations of land uses and in a relationship with the land uses in the surrounding area justify any deviations granted from standard district regulations. Again, at the preliminary stage, your approval is in principle only, and it does not endorse a precise location of uses, configuration of parcels, or the engineering feasibility of the development. Then when it, when the final development comes through, again, it should include any Commission recommended changes. And ultimately, the Commission recommends to City Council with its findings on whether the proposed planned unit development does meet the intent of the chapter. And furthers, you know, that again, it's the, is the give and take meaning the intent and that it's, it's a win-win for both the developer and the city.
You want questions at the end or throughout?
You can go throughout if you have a question.
I do, and I'm just curious about one, like here when it says any recommended changes at the, the approval in principle time. Is that also a time when we make recommended changes or only at the final approval or either one?
No. At the preliminary stage is when you give direction on what you'd want to see
Okay.
when it comes back for final.
Gotcha.
And hopefully those are incorporated. And then, and if not, then when you made your recommendation to Council, you could then put those conditions on as well.
What limits are, like if we said, well, we want you to put a pink elephant out in the front yard? I mean, like what limits are, I guess, ability to provide recommendations back to the developer on what we want them to do? Is there something that's guiding us through that?
There is, and, and when it comes to you, you will have the staff's analysis of how is this deviating, say, from standard subdivision or standard? What's the underlying zoning? So if it's, so say the underlying zoning is multiple family district and they want to put commercial within the multiple family district and call it a PUD. We would point out, you know, what, where, what is that deviation? And if you, if you needed to put conditions on to say, make it more compatible or less compatible, what those kinds of things would be, but it would be following the ordinance standards in terms of what you're reviewing and what you should be making recommended changes on.
Okay, so the preliminary request is going to come with staff recommendations?
Yes, they both will.
One more. In theory, could PUD be placed on any kind of underlying zoning or only residential or?
It can be, it can be over any type of zoning. I believe the ordinance does allow for it to be on any, whatever the underlying zoning is, you can put a PUD on top of it. We will be looking at how is that PUD deviating from what the underlying zoning is allowing.
Right. Thank you.
These are just some illustrative examples of PUDs. Actually Darren had sent these to me. And again, often, like if you think of corporate office parks, very often those are developed as planned units developments. A lot of planning, it's, it's trying to get a mix of uses that aren't typically in one zoning district. So it's kind of combining zoning districts in an area. But you can see how these are all kind of their, their master plan communities essentially. And they're all, and they integrate together. They try to get the, the uses integrated and connected. I mean, for these specific examples, I couldn't tell you what the, the, you know, what the trade-off was, what they were asking for versus what would have been allowed. But it gives you an idea of how planned unit developments are, are put together. One too far. That is all I have. And I know that Fonda is on now. But if the Commission has any other questions, I am happy to answer them.
I do have one again, and that is with one of the objectives being increased density and the trade-off being open space or common space. Is there any kind of guidelines for percentage of that ratio of open space to, to non-open space or anything, or is that kind of just on a case-by-case basis we evaluate?
The ordinance actually has a requirement for a minimum of 10% open space to benefit the development. So the, the PUD does have some very specific standards, but then it also has just some kind of broad things it's trying to allow for.
Thank you.
How many PUDs have been approved in Sandpoint since 2006?
That I could not answer. I know there was one in 2008.
But it doesn't sound like it's a common practice.
It is not.
Where was the location of that last one in 2008? Do we know?
I do not know.
I think someone does.
Somebody does. She could barely contain herself.
Thank you. I would love it.
Well, so a couple of examples. The first would be in 2008, a PUD, actually 2007. The plot was approved in 2008 would be the PUD on the north end of town, the Cedars at Sand Creek. So that's just north there of Schweitzer Cut Off. You'll recall Matty Lane and kind of that whole corridor there to the north. That was a PUD. There were some exceptions to the zoning ordinance to provide for narrower streets, some difference, differences in density and some other minor provisions within the zoning ordinance. So ultimately, it was plotted in 2008. Additionally, seasons is a beauty and it was most recently amended in 2011 and 2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was helpful. Thank you.
And we do anticipate in the next few months for one and or two PUDs to be coming forward. So stay tuned. Then the other thing that I, I had wanted to just bring up tonight, since it was more of a training discussion meeting versus having agenda items in front of you, was some ongoing discussions staff is always having on the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance enforcement of the zoning ordinance and possible changes. The Commission had recommended a few changes to council that will be moving forward on March 16th, along with the hearing on the Sand Creek changes that the workshop will be held tomorrow, but that public hearing won't be scheduled until March. But I just wanted to go through some, maybe some tweaks because obviously we're not going to do a major overhaul of the zoning ordinance before we finish the comprehensive plan because your zoning ordinance should be reflecting your comprehensive plans. We need that done first. But there are a few items that we keep running up against, and I just wanted to kind of bring some discussion to you that may be future ordinance amendments coming forward sooner than later. So the first one. Okay, definitions. Now this sounds really not very interesting, but in fact, definitions are very important to zoning ordinance. And they're important because they provide for consistent administration of the ordinance. If you have a good definition, you can, and something comes up, you go and you see, oh, this is what's meant. Terms that are repeated frequently in the code and are used to assess compliance of a development should have a definition. So things like how, how do you determine a setback? How do you determine impervious surface, things like that? But definitions should not include within the definition regulations or confused zoning with ownership. So I'm just going to give you an example of one of our current definitions and how it could probably be improved to be a true definition within the regulation being somewhere else in the ordinance. So our current definition of dwelling, single family or one family is a detached building other than a mobile home or modular home containing one dwelling unit and not including timeshare ownership of that dwelling unit. So that's a definition that includes what you don't want as well as how it, ownership, which is in zoning. So a cleaner definition would be a detached building containing one dwelling, period. And I just bring that one because we have those throughout and, and we, we tend to get caught up with with things that don't need to be defined in the definition. So that's an example of a definition change we would probably come forward with. Obviously, we can't define all terms in the code. But there, it's, it's helpful when similar terms are used but intended to have different meanings. And you've had cases where this came up recently. But it, you know, going through, you'll see that we have adjacent, abutting, adjoining. And they're used kind of in different sections, different ways. So having what, what that, those definitions are would be helpful. As you're all aware of a recent case, the whole question of adjacency came up. Whether we can truly define that or whether that's something that is more on a case-by-case basis, but abutting, adjoining, those are pretty, you know, that's a little clear, but it just, it's interesting that you'll read the code and that in this section it says adjacent and this section says abutting and over here it says adjoining. So if we knew exactly what we meant with those terms, that would be helpful. So just wanted to give you a heads up. Those are the kinds of tweaks or changes that would be coming forward, you know, sooner than we finish the comprehensive plan because whatever definitions are obviously are going to carry through to future zoning ordinance. Let's see. So another section. Or some of this is just questions or, you know, for discussion purposes. There we go. The approval process. Currently, the ordinance doesn't have an expiration for any of the zoning approval processes at the staff or commission level. And we may want to add that because you get in, if someone comes forward with a conditional use approval. And then three years down the road, nothing's happened. But there was nothing that made, so it's, it's just putting a sunset on how long is your approval good for? It's not that someone couldn't come back and ask for the exact same thing, but it's just not leaving something out there that, you know, may just be floundering and that may not be the development that happens at all.
Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So would you create a process for approval extensions extending, if, if you had an expiration, but you could make requests for extensions?
You could.
With proper justification?
Okay. Yeah. I can give you an example of the last community I was in. Planning Commission approvals were only good for six months. Well, that's really problematic if you got an approval in June and then it's December and you're not going to start foundations. So we changed it to 18 months. While it was, it was six months we allowed for an extension. But then we just changed it to 18 months because the reality is, 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 you know, getting approval at the planning commission is really an early step in a development. So, but I can tell you even after extending it to 18 months, we had developments that after 18 months. And we had changed it, they couldn't ask for an extension. They actually had to start the process over. Because the other thing you run into is if you've changed your ordinance regulations, you don't want something out there that was approved under an old code. So you don't want it too, too long. But you could build in extensions if that's the direction you wanted to go.
I have another question too, and that is, do any kind of conditional uses that are approved, do they transfer with ownership if the property changes ownership?
I believe so. Multiple family development standards. So the intent of the RM zone is to allow a mix of housing, single, two, and multiple family buildings or dwellings. So then there's the question, and this came up recently too, of building heights versus setbacks. So the current regulation states the overall height of a multiple family structure shall relate to that of adjacent structures. By avoiding construction that varies greatly in height from adjacent buildings, new multiple family structures shall graduate them. So this is the whole thing of one story, one and a half, two stories. And, and this is more just food for thought as things are coming through. But in reality, two stories is a common single family building form. You could have a single story, single story, single family or a two-story single family. So it should also be allowed by right for multiple family dwellings. And rather than perhaps limiting the height of multiple family dwellings when they would only be as tall as a single family dwelling, you could look at requiring greater setbacks for a building over two stories. Or so many feet in height to minimize that impact of build, because obviously a multiple family building might have more mass than a single family home. So you allow for larger setbacks rather than saying just because you have more than one dwelling unit, it can't be two stories when the single family next door could be two stories. And this is a kind of concept where setbacks are changed based on building type or zoning. It's already in the C district. When a C district is abutting, a residentially zoned lot, the building has to have additional setbacks. So that's just, you know, that, that was an issue that, that came forward more on what really is a one and a half story, but it, it, the reality is, is if, if you have a district that's allowing a mix of uses and one building type by right can be so many stories, why wouldn't all buildings in that zoning district be allowed to have that same height? So really that's just more food for thought. There's a lot of things like this and there's a lot of different ways to go at it. But again, it, it is the intent of the multiple family zone to have that mix of housing. And so not everything is going to be the same. This is, this is one we come across too. In the A, B, and C commercial districts, currently all three of those districts require a zero front setback. Or on the front property line, it's a zero front minimum and maximum, which means you have to build to the front lot line. Um. There's some ability to set it back ten feet or twenty-five feet with a conditional use approval for what's called civic space. Um, now, this is very frequent or common, I would say, in a historic downtown. Because the historic building form is the buildings are at the lot line and it's a pedestrian, very much a pedestrian district. Um, so that makes sense to say that you can't push your building back when all the other buildings are fronting. The property line, they don't want one that's being pushed way back. Uh, but in the B and C districts, it might make more sense to allow a building to be built to the lot line. Um, but to, to not require it to maybe allow for a setback of so many feet. Um, instead of requiring that it, that all the buildings be pulled all the way up. Um, and I'm gonna see, I think I have the zoning map here that I could. Okay, uh, so this is. The zoning map. And the purple is the commercial, a traditional downtown district. The dark green is the C C. Um, district which parallels um two. And then the lighter green areas are the um. B district. Um, so again. In an autumn, the, the highway is clearly an automotive oriented district. There is the walking path on the one side, so we may wanna be cautious of that. We may want the buildings up on that side. Um. But it, it, it is just, it's unusual that in all your commercial districts, you're encouraged, you're requiring that real closeness to the lot line. Um, we, we have other ways of controlling where the parking is located in the back of the building, so. That's not the purpose for it. Um, and it, it just. For a lot of, you know, if you're an office building. You may not be having your customers walking to you, so you having a storefront entrance may not be as critical. Um, so it just is something to. Again, it's just food for thought of. What are we really trying to accomplish? Through our, our regulations of what the, the built environment is going to be in the future. Uh, let's see here. Then the last thing I had and. Is uh sign regulations. Um. Just let you know, we will be bringing changes for those because there is some work that needs to be done. It's very important your sign regulations are content neutral. And that is you're, you're regulating sign type, location, duration, not what the sign says. Um, and we just wanna make sure that our regulations meet those criteria. Um, so that's just. Something more, probably it's not at the highest priority level, but it's something that. Uh, will likely be coming forward. And I think that is. Yep, that is all I have on pending ordinance. Changes. Just wanted to give you a taste of what you might be seeing in the future.
Discussion questions, anybody? And I know earlier you, you alluded to Fonda, was, was there any presentation that Fonda was doing, or we kind of? Okay, got you. So with no further business, if that's where we're at before the commission. This meeting's now adjourned at six oh five P M.